A March meeting of the Gardner Planning Board. This is a regular meeting, not a public hearing. First item of business is approval of minutes from our January 11th meeting, which also included the public hearing of Seven Point in Massachusetts.
And a commotion. Moving up the minutes as presented.
And seconded to accept the minutes. Any discussion? By voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. New business, City Council zoning amendments referred to us for recommendation. Ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675, to change the classification of certain parcels of land along Route 140. Ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner entitled zoning to add sports betting to the zoning table of uses. And thirdly, an ordinance to amend the code of City of Gardner entitled zoning to amend Section 1070 marijuana establishments to increase the quota allowed by the code of the City of Gardner. Mayor Nicholson, I understand you'd like to speak with us this evening about those three items.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for letting me join you all. I do like to visit the boards and commissions that I appoint at least once a year, as the charter does make me an ex officier member of all of those boards and commissions. So it's nice to finally be back here at the Planning Board after, it's been about a year and a half since the last time. But per these proposals that are here, these are all coming at different recommendations of department heads, different conversations that have come up, different professional studies that the city has. Do you want to just go in the order that they're printed on the agenda and go down from there?
Yeah, if you want to speak to us about each one in the order that they're on the agenda, please do.
So this is the proposed zoning amendment that comes following the MRPC study that's included in the packet here. I did highlight the main portions of it in the summary on page four. If any of the members would like a copy, I do have the highlighted portions here. This is coming from several different things. It's that we've seen a lot of new interest coming to Gardner. In the past year, there was $420 million worth of real estate sales that took place within the city in 2022. In 2022 calendar year, also, we had 33 businesses open their doors. Gardner's starting to get a lot more attention from different people coming through. We have had about 13 developers reach out to different sites located within this area here. However, this is all currently zoned as rural residential two. The issue that we're having with that, aside from the fact that we've got people who are interested in the city, because if we have people who are interested in portions of the city that it's not zoned there, we can work with them, see if there's other places that work for them, see if there's other ways that we can go about the goal, be it a hearing before the ZVA for a variance or something of that nature. But what's unique about this location is the amount of complaints we get from the police department in terms of safety. We've got a several, a high number of car accidents that have taken place in this area. The police department is actually running a full compiled report that the chief plans to submit at the public hearing as to the number of fatal accidents that have happened here. And then this build-out study that was done in 2010, I believe, I don't know the front page in front of me, that talks about the impact this would be if the city were to move forward in selling some of the portions of the land that the city owns, because the city is one of the largest landowners in this red area, things of that nature. We've started to do this more and more. Since 2020, we have sold nine different properties that the city had either taken in tax title or had owned and were no longer using. That's brought in an additional $50,000 worth of tax revenue to the city, allows us to get those back on the tax rolls. There are certain restrictions as to what we can and can't sell. By city ordinance, we cannot sell watershed land, which is why this big swatch is taken out of the middle here, as this is the city forest, so it's not only protected by Article 97 of the Constitution that says if we wanted to do anything with it, we need legislative approval by the House, Senate, and Governor. But it also has the brook running through it that means that we wouldn't be able to sell it even if we wanted to, but we don't. It's really looking at these other places that the city owns, but it has to be contiguous per state zoning laws, otherwise it's considered spot zoning. So that's why there's some other parcels thrown in there. Any parcel that's not currently vacant gets grandfathered into their use. If there's a residential house on that plot, if there's something else, that gets grandfathered until that use changes. If there's a house on it now that three generations down the line wants to change it for something else, that's when the zoning would lose its grandfather. Or if it's vacant for more than three years, that's when the zoning would lose its grandfather. But anyway, this wouldn't affect anyone's current living situation. It wouldn't affect, in terms of their house on their land, things of that nature that's there. But really, what's happened with, you know, looking at what was done a decade ago and comparing it to what we're seeing now, the minimum lot size has stayed the same. So any house that's built in rural residential two needs a minimum 60,000 square foot lot with 150 feet of frontage. The study calls out, because those numbers were the same back when this was done, this could result in up of 792 homes being constructed up here if we were to go and really make this land usable and beneficial to the city by getting it back on the tax rolls, by having something production with it, and meeting the demand that we're seeing in what, you know, people are coming to Gardner looking for. There are currently no water or sewer utilities in the area, and I do have the maps here if anyone would like to see. I had hoped to have them something like this, but I was in Miami for bereavement the past week and just landed about an hour or two ago. So I wasn't able to get those up there. But those maps will be submitted for the public hearing as well. We estimate that it costs between $300 and $500 per foot to run utilities into the road up to a new place. The utilities end just around the golf course area. So we anticipate to get utilities from the golf course area out to this area of the city that's currently only on well and septic. It'd be about $5 million to run water and sewer out to this area here. The build-out report here says that you wouldn't need public utilities for certain commercial or industrial spaces, but if you were to do residential out there, especially with 792 homes, that's something that would have to be done, particularly also with that number of homes that need to be constructed. With 722 homes, 150 feet of frontage minimum, we're looking at about 25 additional miles of road that would have to be added if we were to put housing out in this area. And I understand that at the joint public hearing on Monday, the question was asked about housing and at the previous City Council meeting as to if we're looking at, you know, developing some land and finding new ways to utilize the demand that we're seeing in a smart growth way, why not look at housing? Housing is something that the city absolutely does need, and I understand that the governor and the lieutenant governor have been pushing for housing, but we have also been in talks with the administration at the state level to make sure that we're doing our part. Right now, there are currently 508 housing units, either in design, in permitting, or in process throughout the city. 251 of those will be in the downtown alone with the development that we're seeing there, and the breakdown will be given to you all at the public hearing as well as to what buildings are going to have how many number of units. The 251 units in the downtown are all new market rate units that have either been vacant since they were purchased several decades ago before I was born, that are now being refurbished and put back out to market, or are new construction. There are about 257 housing units, either planned, permitted, or designed throughout other locations in the city. I've mentioned the properties that we've recently sold. The School Street School, the winning bidder for that is looking at constructing 30 condominium units within that building. All five proposals that were received for the Prospect Street School proposals were all housing units. The Leamy Street only had one person submit on that one for a multifamily housing, two multifamily housing units over there. And the Stewart Street, the old factory at the corner of NATO and Stewart Street that only had one person submit for that, that was awarded to a developer who'll be demolishing that factory and installing seven new condominium units there. So when you add all this up, we have a ton of housing that's being constructed in the city. At the bottom of the report, it says this could, the 720, excuse me, 792 housing there could result in upwards of 1,800 new residents and 319 new students. Tracking, that's based off the 2000 census, tracking that on the census data we're seeing right now. Back in 2000, our students made up 17.5% of our city's population today. They make up 17.7%, so it's pretty stagnant on that level there. But in terms of number of residents, we are seeing a lot more younger, single or younger, excuse me, younger couples, young professionals coming out to the city, and that's the biggest demand we're seeing for right now. That's why a lot of these new units are one-bedroom or studio apartments. So right now, our current projections have us at about, with the current 508 homes that we already know could potentially be coming or are under construction in the city, at about 2,300 new residents in the city without touching any of this over here. To put this into perspective, 2,800 people came out to vote in the last city election. So we're almost doubling the size of, you know, the electorate in the city, let alone the full city as a population, which is a good problem to have, but we want to make sure that we have smart growth, that we have the amenities that are there to serve the population that's coming in. Any sale of this property would have to go through a legally regulated process through the inspector general's office, through a public and competitive RFP program. So there is no one developer who has any claim to an immediate portion of it, only people who can bid on it and put the best proposal. And the reason why state law, Chapter 30B, allows, requires, I should say, us to go through that process is that means that the city that has the opportunity to see how much the person's not only bidding on the property price-wise, but what use they intend for the property, how they plan to utilize it, certain site ideas that they're planning on doing there. And we can either reject all proposals, start from none, stay where we are, and at least say we tried, or we can move on with someone or work with someone to amend their proposal after it's awarded. That's that way too. So that's how the law is set for these to work. I can tell you, in this parcel alone, we've had five individuals come out and express interest in it, but none of, only two of those five are residential. And again, this is something that we're trying to balance. Yes, we need the housing, but we've got a ton of housing that's being built. How do we make sure that we're not becoming too much of a bedroom community and having the offerings that are there for people? Those are retail locations that came out, hotels. We've had about three of those reach out. There is a certain entertainment facilities, amusement facilities, things of that nature have all reached out for several different portions in this red area here. But again, you get some places like the rail beds and stuff like that, that's just because you can't spot zone, so we have to go across there. But that's kind of a lot of the technical stuff behind how we got here. I'm happy to answer any questions that may come up as a result of, you know, the proposal and see what I missed besides what I had on my cheat sheet here.
Why not live in open space?
So we looked at that. There's about a third of the city right now that's in protected open space. A lot of the area of budding this location here is in protected open space. I think we are lucky and blessed to have the amount of land that we have in protected open space. None of the land that's in red right here is currently protected. It doesn't have a deed restriction, it doesn't have a conservation restrict on it, none of it's in 97. With what we're seeing as a need in the city right now, that's why I believe it should be something that we look at for future potential development. And again, there's nothing that says this is what's coming here, and there's no stamp on it. But for what we have right now in the city, we're pretty built out. And there's some examples of different places that are like, there are exceptions to the rule, I should say, the Garbo's Lot, the old S-Bend factory. Those are very good for industrial purposes. There's really no place for commercial growth right now in Gardner without looking at some type of like this. And I think that that's one of the needs that we're hearing from the community, is more business, more job opportunities, more ways to grow our economic base in a smart way that complements what we're, the residents here are looking for and a place to call their home. I understand the need, like I said, for open space that's there. I just think we have enough around that if we were struggling to find places to protect, it'd be a different story that we'd be having right now, and I probably wouldn't be the one up here asking about it. But we already have a third of the city in protected open space that I think we have a good basis to move from.
So there is commercial interest in those areas?
Yes.
Okay.
But again, we can't, that would all have to be on who submits for the RFP proposals. There's no specific, it's going to this, it's going to that. I can tell you, everyone who's reached out, like I said, we've had those two hotels. Their entertainment was a sports betting facility. That's unrelated to why this had to go up, and we'll get into that one later. The retail locations, before all these ended up in Tiffany Plaza, this was one of the areas that they were looking at. You're looking for more of your larger commercial spaces because it's a main thoroughfare that have expressed interest to this rather than the, you know, 33 businesses that we saw in Gardner. A lot of them were in the downtown, 14 of them were. Those were looking for storefronts that were already available. These are the larger corporation-type businesses that I think would really help our workforce that we have here.
Well, one of the complaints was the worry about traffic and speed on that, which was one of the reasons why we, the opinion was that we really shouldn't be building houses out there, which would make it that much worse. How would a commercial entity out there?
There are certain-
Be different.
Yeah, there are certain protections that we can use in commercial properties that we can't do in residential properties. A lot of those fall into the site plan approval process in terms of traffic flow, traffic lights, improvements that need to be made. We saw over with the Community Health Center on 68 that there were certain lanes that had to be added, or turning signals, and things of that nature. And you can control a lot more in a parking lot to fit a commercial location than you can in almost 800 new driveways out there. Even if they're in a subdivision that comes out, now you're adding several different curb cuts through the area that's there. There's a lot more protections and controls that we have. And if you don't mind, I have a different version of the map that has all of 140 here. If you look down in this area of 140 up until Pearl, just about Pearl Street, almost right here, the 140 is there split by a Jersey barrier. There's a lot stronger median in between the two there. So the majority of our accidents that we see on 140 are from Green Street to the Winchunin Line. The Commonwealth has total control over any safety measures that get done on 140. That's why if it was up to us, the police department and the DPW have put in requests several times to extend the Jersey barriers past Pearl Street down all of 140 to improve safety that's there. However, the Commonwealth says that there's not enough fatal accidents to meet their metrics, that are statewide metrics, that again, it's hard to put everything into one. Boston and Gardner should not be met on the same metric, but that's how things work, which is why you have the yellow wiffle ball bat-type barriers that are here in the median. We can control a lot more through a commercial entity coming in someplace like this by having certain controls within a parking lot rather than 800 driveways that come out there. Because when you have a four-lane highway that's divided, you can't turn around, you'd have to go into Winchunin, turn around to get into your driveway, there's a lot more margin of error that comes in from 800 areas instead of just two or three main entrances and exits.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Gentlemen of the board, questions or comments for the mayor on this particular topic?
I'd also add, I know the study, if I may, Mr. Chairman, something-
By all means.
I know the study recommends either a commercial or an industrial zone for the area. The reason why I went with commercial two for the proposal is it's a little more easygoing than a commercial one. There's certain things that are fall under special permits, certain entities that would be allowed more than commercial one. But the reason, the main reason I didn't go with an industrial proposal for this land is mainly I didn't feel it was ripe for this area of the city that abuts, again, I mean, put it this way, I should say, so you can see it better, that abuts this much protected conservation land to have something industrial there. Just while things are certainly regulated as much as they are, and permitted as much as they are, and eyes dotted and Ts crossed, I just think it's safer to not have any industrial up in this area by this much conservation land, particularly when, you know, one of the grants that we announced last year that we got from the Executive Office of Housing and Community Development at the state level was to determine whether or not to add some industrial zones in this area of the city. So where we already have some type of industrial idea for what we may go down the line seeing, that we're working with the Commonwealth right now to study if that's worth it or not, this could be the commercial end of it there too. So we have those environmental protections that are there that could deter any environmental issues with an industrial-type operation where you're manufacturing, you're doing a lot more work there, that's already planned over here. Now, I will say, just because this is 140, and I've mentioned a lot about housing, there is a potential housing development that private developers looking at proposing later on down in this area. But again, I want to stress that the main difference is the barrier that's in between the road and the safety measures that have been really put north, or this side of Pearl Street versus the Winchunin side of Pearl Street. It's just night and day compared to safety issues, and that's what we're seeing in the data that we're having from the police department.
So my question would be, is this a all or nothing? Say if you turned that map back around, if a developer just wanted to buy that, that section off Green Street, say, M47 over here?
Yeah.
On the left, if he just wanted to buy, if he wanted to do something on that, couldn't he just come here and ask for rezoning on that purpose, that special piece of property?
There's certain spot zoning issues that we could come into at that point per our legal department.
Well, I don't know, I'm asking.
No, no, that's what I'm letting you know, because I want you to know what I'm saying is backed up by something, that's all. So yeah, there's certain legal issues that we could run into with spot zoning. The other issue is this parcel actually extends about 30 acres into the town of Winchunin. So this would actually match the zoning across the line as well.
Well, like you said, if a developer wanted to come up for a hotel or-
Oh, yeah, yes.
I mean, if he just wanted that section, I mean, all you would have to do is come for rezoning, and it'd be up to the planning board or the zoning board to change whatever they want to do.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we were just, we explored something like that. There are a couple of different spots that this could fit, but when you do a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there, a little bit there, that's when it becomes spot zoning-ish.
Yeah.
And, but the other issue is, is if we go out for an RFP and go to sell it, we have to go with, if we award it to someone, we have to go with whoever's the highest offer and the best use of the land based on current conditions. So under current conditions, the only thing you can do there is housing. So that's one of the reasons why too, that if we were to go out and we didn't have it zoned yet and say, "Come back to us after it's zoned," we may be seeing something that may not be in the best interest of the city at the time.
So I guess to reiterate what you've been saying is that it's currently rural residential two. And that creates a lot of driveways, and I can understand that. And then you're asking for it to go to commercial two, I think? And I heard all your controls that could be placed in any development. Why can't the city just make up its mind that we're not going to sell it, period? For anybody or anything?
Well, that's kind of the question I answered for the chairman earlier, is that I think there's certain, I think there's a certain merit that we have built out as a city, but we don't have everything that we need for the residents that are here. Our industrial parks that police have built out are, the land is what's here. Unless you're tearing down houses at this point, there's really no land to develop on it. And I think there's still work that needs to be done to, you know, build our workforce that we have here and help boost our economic growth. And that's why I think that it's something that we should look at for that way. And if we don't get any good proposals, we don't get any good proposals. But I think it's something that we need to take a strong look at to plan for the city's best interests in the long run.
So I guess what you're saying is, just in case some developer comes along with a project that's beneficial to the city overall, besides taxes, then we could consider it, I guess that's what you're saying?
They have someplace to go.
Yes, they have someplace to go, one, but we always are outgoing and marketing the city to different businesses that come through, too. And a lot of the issues is, is we have people who respond to our marketing inquiries that are like, "Well, I need this much, this much, this much, and this much," and we just don't have it. So it's almost like we go out, we say, "We need, you know, you come here, we'll be a welcoming community for you, you'll help our workforce by this much, we have this much of a population that's looking for a job or unemployment rates."
I'll have a property.
We don't have a place to put them.
Thank you.
Which in turn brings to a certain stagnation that we've seen historically.
Exactly.
That's where you go on both sides, don't you?
Now that the demand is there, I think this is the time to be able to move and do something like this so that we can work off the demand.
Anything else, gentlemen? All right, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of clarifications.
Yeah.
The mayor had mentioned that the old poor farm behind the city forest was eliminated because it was in the watershed. That whole area is in the watershed, just so everybody understands.
So we pulled actually the state map, and it is not. The Zone C goes out probably until about here, and the copy's here if anyone would like to have that copy. The Zone C ends just about here on this end. We know, I talked to the city engineer about this this afternoon, because if it was in the watershed, we wouldn't be able to sell it. So that's another thing, so we couldn't go through with that.
So maybe we have different definitions of watershed, but we have a city watershed plan that shows that whole area in the city watershed, in the main basin and the sub-basin. I'll share everything.
Okay. No, like I said, this is the state's official DEP JS map that we pulled that from.
So you're saying there's no watershed in those red areas on your chart?
Correct. There's a small surface water protection zone that's listed on the city's map in this corner down here. That is not listed in the state's official coding of it, which is where this map comes from.
So it's not north of 140, it's only south of 140?
What was that, Chairman?
It's not north of 140, it's only south of 140?
For this city watershed? For the parcel that you just mentioned, correct.
No, I mean, for the whole area though, that's being proposed.
Correct, per the state map, and we can confirm that and get that available for the next, for the public hearing. There's some, let me just take a look at this. There is some here where the Gamma Horse Farm is, they are exempt from zoning, so under the Dover Amendment, so they still be able to exist there, but there is a little portion of the watershed that cuts across Green Street around here, it looks like.
The only other clarification I had, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chairman, was the, the, the plan that's referenced in the application does recommend rezoning a portion of that area. But the only area they recommend rezoning is between Green and 140, and not the area in question in this application. That's the only, I just wanted to point it out to the board, which actually I already have to some of them anyways. So the area, what east of Green Street up to 140 is the area, south of 140, the hill property in that area. That's all, that's all I wanted.
That's going up the hill?
It's, yeah, from Green Street up to 140, yeah, yeah, on the south side.
On the, on the east side.
On the south side.
South side of 140, yeah, yeah.
That's the only two clarifications I wanted to make.
Yeah, I was looking at that the other day.
Mayor, the 120-acre portion at the Winchunin Line, is that, I mean, it's kind of a standalone parcel, would that be considered spot zoning in any way? Do you know, have you clarified that?
Yeah, so we have clarified that with legal counsel, where it touches across 140, that's where that stops the spot zoning. So it's contiguous over the road. That's been clarified through case law.
Thank you.
Anything else, gents? All right, you wanted to talk to us about sports betting as well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is something that's new to the Commonwealth, that cities and towns across the Commonwealth are now having to add to their tables of uses. This is a result of a Supreme Court decision that took place in May of 2018. The Supreme Court struck down the Professional and Amateur Sports Protection Act. What that act did was forbid sports betting nationwide except for certain specific-approved states. The Supreme Court threw that out as a violation of the Tenth Amendment because it said only these specific states can have sports betting. But what this, that eventually did was legalize sports betting nationwide. So last year, what the legislature did was adopt a statute that was signed by Governor Baker in August into law that legalized sports betting in Massachusetts and regulate it through certain different manners. It's one of those things that, where it's allowed federally and by the state wise, it's considered a violation of the First Amendment if we bar it from happening in the city. We cannot forbid it from entering, but we can control where it goes in the city. It's one of those things that we've seen in several different court cases that have come down and several different things as they've been allowed. Certain things can be controlled into where they're located, but cannot be completely forbidden. In fact, when the cannabis law in Massachusetts was originally adopted, there was a provision in there that said cities and towns could forbid, take votes to ban cannabis facilities from coming into those towns. Those laws have since also been overturned by the courts as a violation of the First Amendment as well. So this is really just trying to make sure that the city's protected so we don't run into any of those situations, putting it in with the indoor and outdoor amusement sections of the table of uses. Now, the sports betting law that was adopted by the legislature last year and signed by the governor is very thorough in terms of the legalese that it used to- is very thorough in terms of the legalese that it used to describe this situation, that situation, this situation, that situation. Broken down, there are three approved, what's called retail sites for sports betting in Massachusetts, and those are our main casinos. It's Plainville, MGM in Springfield, and Encore in Boston. There are ten approved mobile applications that anyone can have anywhere. So if you've been on your phone or watching TV and you've seen the latest DraftKings ad, it's because now you can just download that directly on your phone and bet on certain sports games. However, where we come into play this and why we're looking, I'm looking to see if we can protect the city in these matters and control where they go, is the kiosks that are allowed under the statute. Now, these are similar to the Keno machines that you see in different restaurants or the scratch ticket vending machines that you see different places. However, they are severely, severely, severely regulated by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission. An entity cannot open a facility, or cannot put one of these in a facility that they themselves do not own themselves, and the license for one of these is five million dollars. And that's an annual license from the Commonwealth. If you want to have an online betting license, that's an additional seven million dollars on top of that five million dollars. So there are certain, that is a control in and of itself, if you will, as to making sure that someone's got the wherewithal to do one of these facilities that's there. But what could happen and why I say this affects Gardner is a sports betting location opens up a restaurant in Gardner. Because we're looking for, one of the biggest things we're marketing for right now are job creation in restaurants, because those are the two things that we hear people wanting the most. If a business owner owns a restaurant that also has a sports betting license, they can put those sports betting kiosks into the restaurant, just like those Keno machines, just like a scratch ticket vending machine, anything of that nature. But we can control where they go the moment those go in there. Now, I want to clarify too, that these are also heavily regulated in how they interact with the city as well. They have to sign a host community agreement before any sports betting happens within the boundaries of the city. That includes a minimum of a hundred fifty thousand dollar a year impact fee to the city that can be negotiated higher or low, higher but not lower based on impacts that the city is seeing. There's certain payments that we get from every transaction that happens from a sports betting license or a sports betting transaction that takes place on any of these machines that are there. There's definitely benefits financially for the city, but again, the main reason behind this is where they're now legally allowed in Massachusetts. I don't think they should be going in a residential location as much as we can do put them in a place that's already zoned for entertainment, amusement, things like that that already fall into a similar category as a sports betting location. And I'm happy to answer any questions that may come up. Oh, and the last thing is, is if any place that goes up would still also require not only regular site plan approval, development review committee approval, but also each location would have to have an annual vote allowing them to continue their betting operations by the city council after a public hearing.
Assuming the board votes in the affirmative, their recommendation to the city council, perhaps a special permit would be another check.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. And I, yeah, I think changing it from a permitted to a special permit would be absolutely fine. Again, this is just trying to get it in there so we're protected and don't have to...
But we have that much more control over where they go and what they do.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Questions for the mayor on this topic, gentlemen?
That one's easy.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of few lines.
Yes, Mr. Borger, please do.
So, let me get my bearings straight here. You'd mentioned the special permit option. If this is going to proceed, I think it's a good idea. If a facility like this was to come to the city and get permitted right now, they'd be able to do it by right, which is strictly site plan approval. I certainly think that a project of this magnitude would need a little more structured approval process, which a special permit would be associated with. So I certainly would recommend that if this was to be approved eventually. So, Mr. Mayor, in the legislation I read, there's different categories of licenses.
Yes.
The one, two, and three. You already did explain a little bit about rigorous and expensive process to go about getting them. Can you give us a little more insight as to what those cover?
Sure.
Do you have that?
Yes, I can get that. I can absolutely respond to that. So again, the application fee itself is a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar application. It's non-refundable to the state, and that's whether or not the application gets approved or denied by the Commonwealth. There are only three allowed zones for casinos in Massachusetts right now, and those three were taken when the casinos opened with Encore MGM, and I forget the name of the facility in Plainville. Those are the only three that are allowed to have full retail sports betting. Now, retail sports betting and all of these other mobile, mobile sports betting and kiosk sports betting are also regulated within those. You can bet on professional teams. You cannot bet on a Massachusetts college against a Massachusetts college. It has to be Massachusetts versus someone from outside the Commonwealth. That is what Encore Casino just ran into. They were recently fined. I believe it was upwards of a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in the first weekend that sports betting was allowed because they allowed a BCBU game to be bet on at their facility. Because those are two Massachusetts-based institutions, it was a violation of the statute. Therefore, they got a written slap, if you will, by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission. The, that's going in and basically sitting at the table and going for it. That's your retail sports betting licenses. You're actively betting as the game is going on in a facility where you can watch the game. Your mobile apps, it's just like your fantasy football, fantasy, any type of fantasy draft that you do on your phone, but you can bet on each game in between, and it's run by the lottery. The kiosks themselves, again, are these machines, they don't have a limit yet. The Gaming Commission is still regulating those as we speak. We expect that we'll have something by May first as to if there's going to be a limit on the number of kiosks or any of that nature that comes up. We'll be ready for it, is the way I look at it. Because those are the only facilities that could open in Gardner, because we don't meet the casino zone. We're not running a mobile app. Really, the only thing that could affect us is a kiosk facility.
A kiosk, okay.
Yeah.
And that's what it would be called, kiosk facility, or is there another name?
No, it'd be a kiosk facility. They're not called slot parlors because they're not a traditional slot machine where you put the thing in and it spins and you push the button. They're not other things like that. There is another, there's a fourth exemption in the law, if you will, because Chapter 128. I believe it's 128A.
So I mean, they haven't established a maximum amount of those types of...
A kiosk, yeah, no.
Okay.
Yeah, Section 128A, it's the agricultural section of the general laws. It allows for horse facilities to be placed in any agriculturally-owned, rurally, agriculture-owned, rurally-owned, or any other place deemed by a municipality to be fit. However, there's an exemption in the sports betting law that allows any horse facility to also be considered a sports betting location on the grounds that there's been an eighty-six-point-seven percent decline in the number of horses born in Massachusetts in the past twenty-five years, and it's considered a protected agricultural species in Massachusetts now. Not an endangered species, because that's on a national level, but it's the protected agricultural species in Massachusetts, the state version of that. Therefore, that is now also related to this, but exempted from quota. But that requires four votes of the city council and two votes of the planning board if we were to get something like that here.
One more thing, just a quick note. If this was to proceed and move forward on Number 54, I would recommend just a small edit and rewording of what it says now. Not deleting anything, but just moving the "or a sports betting facility", which is at the end, up to the first sentence after place of assembly, just because it's one of the actual uses identifying it. It's kind of standing alone at the end. It doesn't really read well, but that's the only thing I would do. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. Anything else? Marijuana establishments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is one that we're... There's probably the lightest one that we've been dealing with. The city, back when the statute was adopted by the legislature to allow for retail marijuana sales in 2019, adopted a zoning ordinance that limited it to twenty percent of our liquor licenses, which right now we have ten pouring, excuse me, liquor licenses for off-premise consumption. That's our package store licenses. We now have ten that limited us to two. There is some talk that the state is going to increase our pouring licenses, or, excuse me, our off-premise consumption licenses. We don't know yet. That's still very early on in an economic development bill that the governor's looking at doing statewide. But what really is the impetus behind this is while we've allowed for two, de facto, we've really only had one that's been allowed to open in Gardner. For the past seven years, there's been one of our, you know, facilities that's had some issues that, you know, prohibited it from, you know, opening up and working on its location, things of that nature. And things have started now, and it's very, I think it's going to be beneficial for the developer who owns the property to beneficial to the business who's been putting all the work that's in there. I personally have a strong opinion against limiting free enterprise in terms of our economic community within the city. In terms of, there's very few businesses that we say you can only have this much of, and it limits competition. It makes it so that it's harder for us to get people in. We have had people reach out to us in the past, but we just couldn't do it because we had two active host community agreements that were ongoing. This is something that I believe the market regulates itself. That, yes, we've allowed it for two, but we've seen how it works right now. The police department is fully in support of this measure. We haven't had a single police call related to a marijuana facility in Gardner. And it's a benefit to the city. Since 2019, the city's collected one-point-five million dollars in fees and excise taxes from these cannabis retail facilities, and that's just retail. That's not our cultivation. That's not our manufacturing. That's just retail sales within Gardner. If we get more than two, great. If we don't get more than two, great. I think this is just something that we've seen how it works now. We've seen how the market works statewide. And I think we should let the market play itself at this point rather than stifle competition and stifle how the economy can grow. And quite frankly, we saw how it works when we have too many of these facilities and how the economy just levels itself out. Back five years ago, when I was still in college, we had the four smoke shops downtown. We now have one because the economy only demanded that one. I think this is something that we, you know, over-regulated at the beginning because we were cautious, and we should have been cautious, and we didn't. Now that we've seen how it works, I think it's okay to start letting the reins go. Still keeping a limit on there so it's not a free-for-all, open the floodgates and everything happens, but just let the economy regulate itself and see how things go economically from a business standpoint.
They do seem to have pretty much become part of the landscape in the Commonwealth now. It wasn't as big a deal as everyone was afraid it was going to be at this point.
And like I said, I know a lot of what I've said today is it's for future planning. If it happens, great. If it doesn't, we'll at least say we protected ourselves from it. But I think that's our job, is to make sure that the city's in the most beneficial spot. It could be that if something comes up that's beneficial to the city, be it financially, be it for the residents, be it for what we need for Gardner to be a growing, thriving economic city. We did what we needed to do when the economy plays itself out after that.
So just for clarity, your request is that...
To go from two to four.
Right. Twenty to thirty-five. Marijuana establishments shall not exceed thirty-five percent of what the license is, as opposed to the existing twenty percent right now.
Correct.
Which in real terms is two to four.
Yes, yes.
So if the pouring licenses increase, does that increase the amount that we can allow?
It would, but where it's round up, where we still fall... It could. I don't think it's going to pass through the committee based on what we're hearing from the legislature. I just said that mainly because if someone hears it on the news that they're planning on increasing our off-premise consumption, not pouring license. Because I know I did say that wrong in my end. That if it's related, this would be separate. This is not a proposal that's being done because of that, but more just seeing what we're dealing with here on the city end. Governor Baker did try to increase our liquor licenses and actually make it a local control. He both once tried to increase our licenses and then tried to make it a fully local control without legislative control by the House, Senate, and Governor. That failed both times that it was proposed on its own and all six times that it was proposed over the ten-year of his time as governor. So I don't see the legislature moving on that too much. So I think we kind of have to do whatever we can for ourselves at this point.
Anything else on this one?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for a very comprehensive presentation on all three items. All right, gentlemen, before we move on, I think what I would like to do is propose that we vote on each of these one at a time, starting with, or discuss and vote, of course, 10891, which is the certain parcels of land on Route 140 from rural residential two to commercial two. Do we have any further discussion on this and debate? Questions, considerations? Go ahead.
I'd like to thank the mayor myself for clarifying a lot of that. I came in with a lot more questions than after the presentation tonight has been very much clear. I think it's upfront what we're trying to do, benefits of the city at this point, that's all I have.
Yeah, I was concerned about watershed. Mr. Borger stole my thunder with that question. I was convinced there was watershed out there, and that was a big stumbling block for me, but we have the data that says otherwise, so that kind of alleviates my concern on that count. Other thoughts, gentlemen?
Well, my concern on that watershed is the director said there is, and the mayor said there's not. So apparently, we're kind of a standstill here. What's watershed and what's not watershed? Is that correct? What did I? Or the engineer, Rob?
Yeah, could I interject?
Please do.
So there's two things we're looking at here. The city does have, and it touches the eastern portion of the southern portion on 140, what we call the Surface Water Protection District. It's a line that runs through, I don't know, just the eastern edge of the site. And then the watershed mapping from the state, which I believe is accurate in terms of the topography of the watershed. I don't know the background of how the surface water district we have on the books was delineated other than it disagrees with the state mapping, which of course is based off of topography. So... That parcel is in the watershed of Wilderbrook. Yeah, the, on the western side, western, southern side of 140. Wilderbrook is not in our surface water watershed. It's not attributable to Crystal Lake, Cowee, or Pearly Brook Reservoir. It actually dumps into Parker's Pond. So there's some discrepancy between what we have on the books and what the state considers our watershed. And that's, the parcels on the other side of 140, I do think both, they're touched by the state watershed mapping, and I think mostly in what we call the Surface Watershed Protection District. So there's some discrepancy there. We do zone it as an overlay district, and it does touch, you know, that parcel on the western side and goes up through quite a bit of the other parcels. In fact, the other parcels are probably fully in it. And then also in, you know, the state mapping, the Zone C, which is the limits of our watershed.
So there is watershed on the other side of 140, within those red parcels? Is that what I'm understanding?
On the north side, there are some, yes.
Is Mam John's considered part of the watershed? Or it's fed off of the pond that comes down through?
I'm not familiar with... Say it again?
Mam John's.
Mam John's, the pond, it's up off of Wheeler Street.
Okay.
And that falls down, it goes down behind the racetrack. I always thought that that one is the part of the...
That probably is in the watershed. Wilderbrook, which is partially mapped within our surface water supply overlay district, is not attributable to our, and all three of our reservoirs. It's outside of that. How it get, and it's only a portion of it that's mapped that way. So I don't understand how it was mapped, but it's there on the books. It's right on our GIS as shown as an overlay district.
It's a surface water overlay district. It's not as encompassing as the watershed district itself. It's a surface water overlay district, which is mapped off of the state Zone A, B, and C system. This is out of my expertise, so I can't really speak too much about it technically, but especially, you know, compared to the city engineer. But I do have a report that the city did... But I do have a report that the city did on its watershed land and the main basin is the majority of that land right there. The sub-basin encompasses all of it. And I will share that information with the board and whoever else wants it at a later date. I don't have it with me tonight.
So again, this would dictate how we vote on, I mean, you're expecting to vote on us and we're not too sure what's going on.
Yeah, that is an issue. Is it affecting our watershed or not? And I'm not at all clear on this. I don't know.
Unless we table this, that first proposal for our next meeting until we get more clarification.
Well, we got a public hearing scheduled with the city council on April 3rd. And I think it costs upwards of 15 or $2,500 to reschedule one of those things because of the public advertising. But by the same token, if there's a big question on watershed, I don't want to rush this either.
I mean, this is a question that we can get you within the next day or two as well. We can certainly get it before April 3rd.
Yeah, but we have to have a meeting prior to, prior to April 3rd, I believe.
Who's another meeting? Possibly, if you could put off the meeting for another date, maybe next week sometime?
If that's amenable to you guys, you know, if we can get more comprehensive data so we can make an informed choice, I would be happy to meet again. But again, I'm one of a team here.
I don't have a problem with that, Mr. Chairman.
I'd feel more comfortable if we could run down, get the information, maybe Rob can dig into it. Have her have more answers.
And this isn't necessarily a negative, it's a, we don't have enough data.
I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just keep in mind that it's not only watershed, it's open space recreation land that's been identified in the open space recreation plan this board has been supporting for, you know, the past 30 to 40 years. So I just want you to consider that too.
Some of that is open space recreation land?
It's all considered, identified as open space recreation land in the open space recreation plan.
Yes, it's identified as potential use for open space, but it is not actually restricted for open space recreation.
I mean, the reasons why it's identified like that is because that's how it's utilized and that's how it's been utilized for generations. There's 10-plus miles of trail systems running through that land. I utilized it as a kid growing up. And I just want to bring that to the board's attention. It's, you know, it's a fact and that's why it's been identified is that I worked on the open space recreation plan back in 1994, the second one that the city ever did.
Speaking to these specific parcels, that also coexists with that rural residential two designation?
Some of them, not necessarily all of them, but it's grown over the years and that's the whole purpose of having the open space recreation plan. Most of them, yeah, were identified back in 2000 was the next one and, you know, it grew and the city's been, you know, growing ever since. Again, that's, it's an important fact to consider as is the watershed. Understanding the mayor, the mayor's, you know, reasoning for wanting to rezone it, which, you know, also makes sense. But it's up to this board to make a recommendation whether they want to do it tonight or set up another meeting to do it.
Yeah, I certainly understand where you're coming from, but we need just a little more data.
I get that.
Before we can make a truly informed recommendation to the city council.
No, that's understood.
Meanwhile, moving on, so we'll regroup perhaps next week once we have that further information and then we can make a definitive recommendation to the city council and not throw the April 3rd hearing into disarray. Sports betting. Any questions, comments, further questions for the mayor, clarifications?
I make a motion, we accept the change.
One second.
Make a recommendation, make a motion to recommend.
What we're doing, Arfo, is a recommendation to the city council that they adopt this zoning change. They're the ultimate authority. Just to clarify what you just...
That's correct.
That's correct.
All right, then a motion made and seconded by the roll, please, Mr. Schwartz. This is on sports betting.
Yes.
To recommend to the city council.
To recommend to the city council.
Mr. Bittes.
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
Well, you already made the motion, I guess. Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, unanimous. And 10893 marijuana. Entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the ordinance.
You recommend it.
Recommend the ordinance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, once any more further discussion? Very well, by the roll again, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Bittes?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Good, thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman. All right, next up, special permit modification request from Seven Point Canapreneur Partners.
Yes.
Come on up, gentlemen. Add your names for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm David Miller, here locally representing Seven Point Partners. And I'm Todd Solover from Canapreneur Partners.
Go ahead, please.
Now, Trevor, did you want to put any information there or do you want me just to set on size?
It's all yours.
So we were here back in January, you probably all remember, it wasn't that long ago, to ask or request for, get a new special permit for this project, which has been ongoing. And we obtained the special permit at that time. We also had Canapreneur Partners with us here and had represented that they would be a large part of what we were doing in terms of the capital, providing capital for the build-out of the retail store, as well as provide all their guidance on the operations as well, because they're local. And at that time, we weren't really able to ask for the permit in their name, but we are now and we think it makes more sense for everything now to be in Canapreneur's name and for essentially for Seven Point to step back. And they would complete the project in its entirety. And, you know, Todd's here to answer any questions. I'm here to answer any questions about that as well. Nothing's changing really from what we initially represented, other than that, you know, Seven Point would be taking a step back.
How's the project progressing?
So we have a walkthrough Friday. The landlord's giving us access. We're going to map out the site with our engineering plans, assuming that goes well. I don't see why it wouldn't. We have two weeks for MEP plans to be developed by the architect. Then that goes to bid with a construction company, Valiant. We hope to break ground on the site the first week of May. They're telling us 10 to 16 weeks for construction. That would get us open probably September of this year.
I also wanted to mention, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was in touch with Jeff Cook, the building inspector, who's the interim building inspector, of course, to explain all this to him. Had a couple of conversations with him. So he explained to me that if the building permit had been issued and we did apply for the building permit pretty quickly after we got the special permit, that all it would take is modification of that permit to then have everything in Canapreneur's name as opposed to going through the whole process of reapplying.
The permit was issued on the 16th of this month, so I believe it was issued to Seven Point. We just have to change that to our name for the application process.
We apply in Seven Point's name.
So, yeah, so your special permit modification request is a name change?
Yeah.
A different lead?
Correct.
Agency?
We are, yes, we're going to license this completely to Canapreneur Partners. We'll be the license holder. So we need all the permits and everything in our name. Otherwise, the CCC will say, well, Seven Point has a special permit, you have the building permit. Doesn't make sense, they won't issue a license. So everything needs to be in our name for the regulatory body that we operate under.
And we did initially ask the mayor to assign the HCA, that has been approved. So that piece was done. We also, and this was in the package that we had, but the lease with the owner also has been assigned. So really, the other two pieces that we need to accomplish would be getting this special permit, requesting the amendment from the owner, have the special permit in their name, and then just the building permit piece. And everything else is already on track. And they've already started to move the information for the licensing of the CCC into their name.
Nope, they've submitted all the information that I've needed in order to change over the HCA and to transfer the special permit from mine to entity to the other. So if the board, I'd recommend the board vote in favor if there are no major issues.
Yeah, it seems like a pretty straightforward piece of just administrative business.
I believe it's housekeeping more than anything else. Nothing has changed since January, since the last meeting, other than trying to get the names. Am I correct? As far as putting names back in, getting Seven Point out and bringing in yours.
Yeah, we make no substantive changes to the project itself. Couple of cosmetic changes on the interior, things like that, but nothing materially has changed. We've just been waiting for permits to be issued. Now we need to transfer them into our name. And as soon as we get this, we'll start the application process with the CCC and construction and that process can run concurrently. So it won't delay us. I want it open, sorry.
All right, well, I'd like to add, entertain a motion. Were you about to say something else, sir?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay, sorry. Did you have?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
All right, so, yeah, for changes. Right, so is that it? One second. All right, so motion made and seconded that we approve the special permit modification request from Seven Point to Canapreneur Partners. I struggle with that name.
Try spelling it and email the people. Oh, it's awful. Things you don't think about when you name something.
It looks good, though.
Yeah.
By the roll, please, Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Bittes?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
And Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Good luck with your project.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night.
All right, 2.3, next up. And this would be informal discussion about Concord Crossing Open Space Residential Development.
I don't know if the board gets copies of our letter, if we need copies of the letter?
Yes, six inner packs.
So...
And your name and affiliation for the record, sir.
Wesley Fliss, Haley Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Fliss.
I am the engineer on the project. Ron Coivie and Laurel Adams are in the back here from Harbor Classic Homes. And Peter Capabasso, the attorney for the applicant, is here. So about two years ago, the client and Mr. Capabasso were in front of this board to talk about Concord Crossing over on Clark Street and Century Way. And I could see you have the old plant there, so it was just perfect. So at that time, there was some conversation about the proposal for the open space residential development. One of the couple of issues that came up at the time was the access into the development. And so when the developer went to the building inspector to get a determination on the access for the project, the building inspector sent the applicant to the zoning board of appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals approved one access point, denied the other. Then the applicants appealed that decision to court. Got remanded back to the board. The board, just within the last few months, the ZDA has approved the second Egress. And so now we do have two variances for the access into the development. And so now, two years later, we're finally back in front of the planning board to start back on the process of getting this project moving forward. I know the letter and talking to Trevor, Trevor wanted to make sure that we were succinct on some of the conversation pieces that we want to talk about tonight. And the big item that we had, I guess, a question about had to do with some inconsistencies between the zoning ordinance and the application for the ORSD. And so we brought that point up in our letter, something that we wanted to talk with the board about. I know I had a chance to talk to Trevor about that. And I don't know if Trevor, Trevor, you talked with the chairman already about this issue and I'm not sure if the city solicitor had a chance to also weigh in on that also, if needed be. But to us, it seemed pretty cut and dry that the zoning ordinance, which is the calculation of one unit per 40,000 square foot, was the ruling maximum density for this project and not the application as zoning ordinance is the law and the application is just that, an application form. That's...
Correct.
And so that was at least the biggest item that we wanted to get on the table to make sure that we were on the same page with that. And then to talk about, I guess, the next step forward on this project, because I know at the time that, again, two years ago now, it's been that the project was in front of the board, it seemed like the next step, at least with regards to the minutes that I read from the board meeting, was that we would come back in front of the board with a preliminary application and then special permit application for the open space residential development. And so I guess that was the next step, you know, to have a conversation with the board is to see how the board would like us to move forward with this project. Or if there's, again, questions or questions they have with the board.
I think at this point, you should probably prepare your preliminary plan in a conventional way, consistent with the neighborhood, aligned with the code, along with the other requirements of the pre-application process and then discussions can begin.
And I guess that was the question is, so at the last time, there was already that that pre-application process had already happened. Like I said, there are, I think, three or four pages in the minutes of notes and I know Mr. Capabasso has a couple of pages of notes from that meeting. There were a lot of comments that were brought up by the board. And so that was, I want to make sure that we're making that next step correctly. Because I know in the way the zoning ordinance reads, it says that you prepare a preliminary subdivision plan along with the special permit application for the open space residential plan. Obviously, we don't want to get too far ahead of ourself with regards to, you know, definitive plans and anything like that, if we're not going to get a special permit for the open space part of the project. And so, and that's, you know, the way we read the ordinance and I want to make sure that we're just following the proper steps here and moving the application forward in the right direction.
So if I'm following you, well, first, I don't think we necessarily went through the complete process of the pre-application process back over a year ago and...
Two years, two years, almost exactly two years.
February of 20, yeah, okay.
It was February of 2021?
Okay. I'm thinking it was February 22, that's okay. I think it might be a good idea for us to start with that pre-application meeting again and then, you know, have the site walk. Because I really, I went back and read the minutes from that meeting and then read through the pre-application requirements. And I'm not convinced that we actually covered some of the things in the pre-application description, the two items that they actually address. The applicant come in and show the board and to initiate the discussion. We never had the site visit. I just think it might be beneficial to both parties if we just started at that point again. And then, you know, from that point on, after we go through that pre-application process, then we can start the special permit application process. Does that make sense to you? I mean, is that...
I think that there's probably enough that has already been submitted that we might be in a position to discuss having the site visit so that we can get that out of the way. I don't think that there's really much more, because the site, the site map and the existing conditions plan have been prepared and submitted. So we probably could start with a site visit and then, based on the site visit, have a follow-up and then get going with the project.
And I guess that was the concern is that, you know, we understand it's two years since the last time the board had seen this, because there's been a lot of back and forth with the other board. And so we obviously want to work with this board and try to get a product that I think everybody can be happy with, the applicants, but also the planning board. And as I stated in my letter, yes, you know, we had a question about the maximum density. I don't think the applicant wants to get to that maximum density of 90 units or whatever the maximum density cap is going to be after we take out the small area not in the, our district. But I don't, you know, that's part of the conversation is we don't want to come back at the next meeting also and be told, well, it has to be this number of units and then just keep, kind of keep coming back and forth. And, you know, we don't want to, I guess, waste the applicant's time either. But there's also a big timeframe between meetings and we meet once a month. And so we don't want to keep dragging this out. I know the applicants are anxious to get moving on this. It's been two years since they were in front of you before. they were in front of you before. They had a lot of hiccups with the other process, and they want to move with us a lot quicker than it has already been moving. And so, that's kind of why we're anxious to get this ball rolling now that we have the second ZBA approval.
This process isn't going to move any quicker than it normally would. So, I understand, you know, time is of the essence, and it's spring.
Well, and I guess, well, that, well, again, like I said, we were beholden to the ZBA, right, and wait for their decision. And so, until they could finally made their final vote and given the approval on the second entrance, we weren't going to move forward with the project until they had that, because there was no reason to spend money if there's not going to be another approval, or if they had to be back to a court. And so, that's why, you know, again, looking at the way the minutes were written before, it was told to the applicants before, okay, let's, you know, start with the process of the preliminary plan and special permit application. As Mr. Kepabasso stated, is there a way we can at least set a date for a site walk between now and the next meeting? So we're not waiting for the next meeting to come back to the next meeting in three weeks to schedule a site walk, just to keep the ball rolling, you know?
I do believe that the plans that were submitted for that meeting back in February of 2021 conformed to the pre-application submitted. So the site context map and the existing conditions plan have already been provided. The way I read the section, it would be the site visit, that would be the next step, so that we can at least answer some other questions and have a better idea as to what the conditions are on the site.
Mr. Chairman, as I recall, the last meeting two years ago, if this is the right plan, if that hasn't been changed in '21, there was some discrepancy on this plan, this development plan. I believe there was some stuff in watershed that he had lots on.
What, what, no.
Wetlands. Wetlands, I mean, I'm sorry, wetlands. There was some discrepancy. Is that the same map that was done by the original engineer?
So the one that you have in front of you, correct, at least to make that step. So, what I was trying to explain to you is, that plan right there shows the maximum density per the zoning bylaw. The applicant's not looking to get to that number, but get to a number somewheres, you know, between, I guess, what the application has and what the zoning has. So when they're not looking to get to the number that the calculation came up to, which was 96 lots.
Right.
Right? And so, there's some wiggle room with regards to what the concept plan that you saw before, and then the preliminary plan that will be submitted as part of the application. And that was, that was the reason we wanted to take the next step and at least maybe have the site walk, so you can see the site and see what we're dealing, and kind of see where we're looking to lay out some of the property.
In some of the site, the wetlands have been flagged, things of that nature. So, the things that need to be visualized on the land...
Has been done.
Has been done.
And so, the office that I work for, we have done all that work. We do have a real existing conditions plan, where the wetlands have been flagged, have been located, we have that on a plan. And so, those wetlands that we will show on the plan with the preliminary application will be updated. You know, the intent of the cluster, of the open space development is to, obviously, you can see in that plan right there, that pink line in the front, that you cover there, is the watershed, right? And so, all those lots are going to be out of the watershed mapping, as they were there and they will on the preliminary plan. And then, obviously, we will take into account the wetlands buffers that the city has with regards to their own ordinance, which we're well aware of also. And so, that's part of, that was a discussion, right, a discussion, to show you the maximum density that could be out there. And that was the intent of that. And now, the intent now is that let's have a discussion on, come to an agreement on a real number, the applicants be happy with, and hopefully, the board can also work with all, you know, and be consistent with the density that's in the neighborhood adjacent to this, with the other open space developments that are right next door.
Correct. And that's one thing that we didn't really discuss last time, because there was no knowledge on your end on how it all tied in. And that's, that was one of the things I was pointing out.
And part of our conversations you and I had, and that's why I think if we were to eliminate ballpark 15 lots, 20 lots, whatever that number is, now we have a little more area to make the lots maybe not 8,000 square feet, maybe they're 10,000 square foot lots, or, and the lots right adjacent to this are all 8,000 square foot lots.
But they're located in General Residential 3, which is allowed by right. That's the minimum size lot in General Residential 3. So, I understand you want to be, you know, we want to conform with the neighboring residential development.
And conform with your ORSD, which is a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet.
Correct.
And so, that's what we use as a jumping off. So...
But we have other resident, open space residential lots down in that area that I think we need to consider, too, as far as the frontage, this, you know, the square footage, and try to match up more with that, because that's an actual open space residential plan. The development that's done in General Residential 3 is not an open space residential plan. So, I understand where you're coming from, but that's the back and forth we need to have, they need to have as a board in U.S. Navcan. And, yeah, I think maybe, and this is, you know, totally up to the planning board, but maybe moving on to the pre-application site visit makes sense. We can continue this discussion and then have the pre-application discussion continue as the next step under the code, where it says pre-application discussion of design criteria, which is what we're talking about.
And I guess...
Once the, I think, once the board gets a feeling of the land, you know, and a better idea of what's out there, and can talk a little more towards how they'd like to see the actual subdivision laid out.
Yeah, because if you're looking for a number tonight, you're not going to get it.
No, we're not looking for a number.
Not even close to what we're looking for. We need that spatial.
That's why I think the most logical next step is to have a site visit, so that we can actually visualize. And like I said, a lot of the work that would be, need to be done for it to be helpful to the board has actually been done. So it won't just be a site walk, you know, walking through a bunch of woods and trees.
And snow.
Snow, okay, yes, thank you.
What's the snowpack out there like now, do you know?
Probably still two feet. Pretty close.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm...
It's melting, but it's in the woods there, so it's just melting slowly inside the woods.
We don't want to, you know, be snowshod.
We want to be out there tomorrow.
We give the work...
We want to be optimistic.
Yeah, but, yeah, if we could put something between now and the next meeting would be helpful, I guess. Like I said, I just, we don't want to be, like I said, in all fairness to the applicant, they've been pushed for two years trying to deal with the other issue, and now they want to at least continue to move forward. They've had this property for a little bit now, and are eager to develop this piece of property, so...
I mean, once we get into the actual permitting process, I think the board will be open to having additional meetings as needed. So, I mean, we have a timeline to meet, too.
Yep.
So, yeah, we can, how's the board feel about that?
I'm good with the site walk, as soon as it's walkable, that is. I'm not waiting in knee-deep snow, no. We all agree?
Yes.
Unless they provide snowmobiles for us.
Or snowshoes.
All right, good.
Next meeting is three weeks?
April 11th.
Our next regular planning board meeting is April 11th.
Now, before, so, before we come next time, I guess I would ask, what information would you like from us at the next meeting, to continue the conversation?
Parameters per process, which I don't have memorized.
Well, the reason I asked the question, so, so Peter and I do have it kind of memorized, because we've been reading the thing for about the last two months now, trying to figure out the next step. So I think it kind of jumps out of sequence, but I know you guys mentioned a by right plan, right? And obviously, we have a maximum density plan and a by right plan. And so, the by right plan is required as a piece of information as part of the special permit application. So we're jumping out of sequence, but is that something that would be better to be prepared for that conversation? Is that something that, or would you rather see a more realistic conceptual plan of what, really, what the applicant's looking to do out there?
Both. That'd be great.
Yeah.
And that's the reason I asked the question, is what next step do you want us to take? Obviously, like I said, I don't want to spend their money until we have a better feel of where we're going on this, but I also want to make sure that we have enough items to have a conversation with the board, a real conversation.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Go ahead.
Sorry for joking.
That's all right, that's all right.
But I think the more information you can provide to the board at an earlier timeframe within the process, the quicker the time, quicker the process is going to be. So, I mean, they need to make certain decisions. You need to have certain conversations with them to develop a plan that's good for both the city and your client.
Which we have a good idea of, yeah.
So, those two plans you mentioned, I think, would be helpful to help guide the board along, you know, whether it's, it'd probably be helpful to have it before the next meeting. And we'll have the site walk at the same time, in between. And we'll have, at least have comments about the site walk and for the public that doesn't come with us on the walk.
So if the board, excuse me for interrupting, if the board were to do a site walk, I'm not sure what time of day it would be and what day you would want it to be, in case people work during the day, and it needs to be at night or on a weekend. Because what I would suggest is maybe towards the end of next week, I'll touch base with Trevor, give him a snow report, for lack of a better term. And if there's, you know, not much snow out there, we can probably schedule something, you know, the week of April 3rd, so that we can have the site walk before the 11th, which would be your next meeting.
I will not be in the office until April 6th and 7th of that week. So I'll be out the first part of that week.
And it still puts us before that meeting, which would be fine.
Yeah, and the 3rd, we will have a joint hearing with the city council on issues unrelated to you, so that day would be out.
What days do you usually do your site walks? Do you have a specific date?
I have one where I fit them in.
As needed, yeah.
Okay.
I know I can be made available during the day, it's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Schwartz, probably. Some of the other guys have day jobs.
I was just saying, yes.
How about first thing in the morning, we could do, too. I mean, eight or nine o'clock in the morning.
Yep. That's what I mean.
Yep.
Or later in the day, what works best.
Sure.
Here, we'll hash that out, then.
And I'll follow up with you or your assistant and give them the snow report, so we can send a tenant in.
And we'll work on getting those plans together for you, just to get those into you, so you can have that information.
Okay.
And we can have more conversation about that. All right. Thank you, guys.
Good.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, new role business. Anything on your role going? Your place from what would be under your old business? I'm sorry to try to hold my father. Excuse me for having a meeting. Just five. Mr. Cormier.
Trevor, will you touch base or get back to us as far as the information for the sort of set something up? Well, I don't think it'd be that long, so I don't know what the heck now. Do we have to extend this meeting rather than close it, to have that meeting?
No, this is a regular meeting, not a public hearing, so we can just...
Which one you talk about?
Talking about the one...
The one thing, remember?
Yeah, the 140 thing.
No, you guys didn't take a vote tonight, you just take a vote at your next meeting?
Yeah. The other two were off, and we just carry that one over.
So we don't have to close the meeting, we don't have to extend the meeting until...
It's not a meeting, it's just, it's an item on the agenda. You didn't take a vote on it, you'll take a vote on it at your next meeting, if you decide to, which is going to be when you want to meet.
Will we have data by then?
Well, we have, we have the, well, we have it. I mean, you could have it earlier on the 3rd if you want, but if you want to have it before that, we can have it next week sometime.
Do it on the 28th, that'd be next Tuesday. Am I, look at the right...
You won't be here.
You won't be here, okay.
Well, we have the data by then.
No, I mean, I have the report, I have the information.
All right.
The watch will make copies of the map. And then, Rob and I will, just so we all, I think there are, I think people are talking about different things, and that's why I just want to make sure we're clear on what we're talking about.
You can basically lay lines on, on that.
Yeah.
To show you.
The different items that we're talking about, like watershed, surface water protection, and then whatever the state calls there, zone A, zone B, zone C. It's, you know, it's terminology that sounds the same, but we think we're probably talking about different things, and that's why the areas are...
It would be nice to see those rendered graphically and definitions, because I honestly don't know. The rest of us do either. So we were talking March 28th?
I'm not going to be here.
You won't be here?
I won't be here. Anything after that, after that, it's fine.
The 29th would be a Wednesday.
As I work with you.
Better than me.
I'll be back till April 4th.
And how are you doing?
Florida.
When are you leaving, Bob? When are you leaving?
Tomorrow.
Florida, that's for all folks.
On Monday, the 27th, are you, Steve, are you gone on 27th?
Florida is for all folks.
How many, how many people do you need?
What's that?
How many people do we need?
Well, I mean...
No, do we need a majority of five?
Four.
I'm the same.
Well, I mean...
We're running out of time, because he's gone, he's gone.
You'll be taking it up twice, though. So you're going to make one recommendation, and then you have to take another, make another recommendation. So, I honestly, I don't know if it matters.
Just don't know where you're going.
One way or the other. I guess it probably doesn't, because it did separate meetings and it's separate votes, so it probably doesn't matter.
Because we have a joint meeting on the 3rd, so you're running out of time. You only have one week left. You only got next week.
But you're not even going to be at the joint public hearing, so...
I'm working 29th on it.
And who else can't do the 29th? Bob, is that you, or? Can you do the 29th?
Yeah, I can do 29th.
I can do the 29th.
He's in Florida.
Yeah, so...
And he's not going to be here for the joint meeting yet.
Right. So I would just do the 29th then.
All right.
Do you want to do that?
That'll be at 6:30 also?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
And that will be the single item on our agenda, the 140 thing.
Yes, I hope that's it.
All right, so we have, March 29th at 6:30, we'll be meeting. We have the joint public hearing with the city council on the zoning changes. That will be on Monday, April 3rd at 6:30. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April 11th at 6:30. Phew, are we good?
It's going to be a busy spring.
Yes, it is. Well, if there's nothing further, I'll adjourn the motion.
Make the motion, we adjourn.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thanks very much, guys.